I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, May 17. And we will be going into closed session.
We have one item, Island Charters versus City of Avalon.
We'll be back.
We did. They find it. Okay, good.
And we're back.
Can't do this most wanted.
We're back from closed session. Legal counsel?
Oh, we had no report of action.
Okay. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're just going to move right along into roll call, Denise.
Councilmember Cassidy here. Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Olson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here.
Mayor, I'm respectfully asking if we could go right to the first presentation to get...
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
We should have Dino Sarafina. Did I say your name correctly?
That's correct.
He's from Michael Baker and he'll be doing a presentation on the development fees.
Great, welcome to Avalon. Thank you, Dino.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting me. Just thinking that when I first started with PMC, which is a company that was bought out by Michael Baker last year, started with PMC about 10 years ago, we did a holding capacity study for Avalon. We looked at like a dozen different areas, capacities for water, wastewater, fire, police, traffic, it's the whole range of landfill capacity. So it's kind of like coming back full circle now and bringing to you this discussion on impact fees and how that really relates to different capacities in the city for facilities and quality of life. So I'll get right into the discussion. What I'm going to do is give you a broad introduction to impact fees, what they are, assuming that you have only a general knowledge of what impact fees do and what they accomplish, and a little bit of the background of where impact fees, how they're used in California, and the process for setting an impact fee program up for Catalina, Avalon, excuse me. Then I'm going to go through this as quickly as I can so we'll have some time for questions at the end and some discussion, but feel free to ask questions or interject at any time during the presentation. So what are impact fees? So they're a method that cities use to allow developers to pay for their fair share. Fair share is a term of art that we use to indicate what the development's cost share is for mitigation measures, for specifically facility mitigation measures. And the general goal is to help the city ensure the protection of public health. And this is all based in the powers, the police powers of municipalities in the state constitution, the power to enact imposed conditions on new development. So impact fees are one form of condition for new development approvals, conditional use permits, tentative maps, and building permits. So it's a one-time fee. It's paid usually at when the building permit is pulled and it's intended to mitigate all the impacts on public facilities. In general, public facilities have been paid and are paid in three general ways. Out of the general fund, you could pay for facilities with cash, bond financing, revenue and assessment bonds, tax allocation, bonds like tax increment financing, remember redevelopment? That was a form of a tax increment or tax allocation. Melrose is a special taxing district. State and federal grants for wastewater, water quality projects, the state revolving fund, and federal grants for highways and also for wastewater, water quality improvements. And then there's development fees. Development fees and exactions, a much broader category of development, where development pays for improvements is exactions. And impact fees are a subset of the exactions. The direct payments would be for specific impacts of a project that are identified, specific direct impacts that are paid for if the developer doesn't build the facility. In lieu payments, the most typical is payments for in lieu of dedicating property for right-of-way or parks. So many cities have what's called the Quimby Act. It's a park dedication, parkland dedication ordinance. If they don't have the land to dedicate in a subdivision, subdivision too small, they'll pay the equivalent in cash for that land. And then impact fees, we're talking about for citywide medications, cumulative impacts that occur citywide for the developer's fair share of those costs. So the state has passed the Assembly Bill 1600 back in 1984, established the requirements for impact fees. The city would have to show the purpose for the fee, what the fee is specifically going to be used for, what improvements, how the fee revenues are going to be used to build that facility, and the relationship between that facility, the quantity of the facility, the size, and the development that's paying the fee, and the relationship between the need for that facility and the development. Like a water fee, for example, a water facilities fee would look at how many people are generated by that project and apply a fee based on the population that's added by that project. And this is all called the nexus, the relationship between the fee amount and the cost of the facility. So you have to establish what the fee amount is and the cost. You have to make that relationship clear. The cities adopt impact fees generally with this cycle, if you will, starting with growth assumptions, deciding what, let me go to this slide, deciding what facilities to include or prepare growth estimates, those are kind of interchangeable, cost estimates, develop a capital improvement plan, sign infrastructure to development potential, and develop a process test for accepting improvements in lieu of fees like reimbursement fee. If the developer does build a facility larger than what their fair share is, there is a methodology where they could get reimbursement from the fee revenues to pay for the capacity for other development. And you construct the eligible facilities and then review and update the fees regularly about once every five to 10 years. Now, this reasonable relationship in practice, there's nothing in the state law that tells you how this is to be done. The AB 1600 is very general. So over the practice, the last 20, 30 years or so, we've come up with these three aspects of it. First, define the impact in terms of an adopted level of service. The example here is roadway level of service or intersections, and that may not be relevant to Avalon, but you can think of any facility or any service that could be categorized into levels of service, you know, A, B, or C. For example, water supply, level of service A means you can use as much water as you want, any time of the day, without any worries about it. You know, a level of service B is that you have to be rationing, have to be conservative about it. Level of service C is a higher level of rationing. So the city kind of decides what level of service they want for any of these facilities. They establish that, and the developer has to comply with providing that through the impact fee. And establishing the benefit, there is a real benefit for the facility for the developer. In the case of traffic, less congestion, better air quality, for water and wastewater, obviously, it's health and safety and the quality of life and not having to deal with drought conditions. And then there's essential proportionality between the fee and the development. So the more impact the development causes, the higher the fees. And different development types, residential, commercial, industrial, they have different impacts based on the type of use, how many people are generated. You know, a hotel has so many visitors versus residential development, the people are, residents are there year-round or seasonally. So there's different impacts based on land use, and there are factors that the industry has come up with for many of those. What facilities are eligible? And again, these are public capital facilities. These are buildings, buildings or land. They are not operations and maintenance. It's one-time thing. You build, you build a fire station, hopefully it'll be there for 50, 60, 70 years, and fire engines, which have like a cost or a lifespan of well over five years. So our rule of thumb is like five years or more for capital facilities. We're talking probably, police vehicles, squad cars are probably the lowest level. Those have to be replaced, you know, probably every five years or so. Consider some communications, computers, which have a shorter lifespan, but those could be considered. So again, it's water and wastewater infrastructure and not operations. Those would be paid for out of enterprise funds. And the key concept to consider is the deficiencies. A city could be deficient in any number of areas, facilities for water, for example. If there's a water shortage or lack of facilities to provide water, that is considered a deficiency. Again, you could establish what level of service is, but once you've done that and made that a policy, then everybody's on the same playing field in terms of level of service. So once you define what that level of service is, if you're below that level of service, you can't ask the developer to make up the difference in order to bring the city back up to that accepted level of service. That's called the existing deficiency. That is the city's responsibility to finance. And those are called unfunded components of CIP, of the capital improvement program. You have to look at other types of revenue, sales tax, property tax, the general fund in order to make up that difference. And who pays the fee? It's, again, at the building permit stage, all development up to the defined planning horizon, so build-out, in other words, of the community, all new development, all types of development, any development that has an impact on one of those areas. So tearing down one single-family home and building another single-family home doesn't add anything to the impact theoretically. If you were to add three or four units, if you were to put up apartment complex, yes, that would add the difference or the increment of the impact. So there are benefits, as I mentioned earlier, to the developer. There is predictable costs for them. They know what they have to pay. Rather than have an ad hoc approach when the developer comes in with a plan saying, "Well, you know, they add up everything and this is the bill," and, you know, there's, we wouldn't have that. You have the units, the size of the project, the square footage, or the number of rooms in a hotel, for example, and it calculates their fee. An impact program, again, solves the cumulative impact concern. Frequently cumulative impacts are not mitigated in an environmental impact report or the set of conditions that are adopted for a project, only the direct, specific impacts. This allows all the developers to contribute to those cumulative impacts that over time get worse and worse and the deficiencies get greater and greater. And the large developers offset the cost of major public infrastructure. The small developers have this opportunity then to pay into the fee. If they have a direct impact on something and they cannot build what's required, there's this opportunity for them to pay for only their fair share. The idea that it will get built through a collection of fees over time, and then the larger developers would perhaps be getting their reimbursement through them. We stress the general principles. The city would rather have the improvements and not the money. This is not a way to generate funds, can't be used for anything but facilities. And we want to see the facilities that are planned to be within a certain period of time, like, you know, no more than 20 years. Actually, the state law says that every five years you look to see what revenues are still unspent and make some statements about when you expect to get enough money to build whatever it is you wanted to build with that, those fee revenues. The part about having refunding a portion of the fee, I don't know if that's ever happened, that's a potential though. If you've been collecting money over a period of years and you're never going to build something, then you have to figure out, well, was it really necessary in the first place? And the discounting and waiving of fees on particular classes or types of development, one good example is to maintain affordability of residential development, to waive all the fees on affordable housing. You can't take that revenue and apply it to other types. So the city would have to make up that difference itself, adds to the city's share of the cost. And then these are the steps that we use. We've been doing impact fees for, well, since I started with PMC, Michael Baker, for 10 years. We confirm the growth projections with the city, with city planning department, to make sure that we agree with what the future has for the community, develop this list of improvements, refine improvement cost estimates, make sure we agree on what these facilities cost and make the reasonable estimates of those. We conduct public workshops and hearings to let everybody know, the development community, the stakeholders, the residents, what we're doing here and what the purpose of the impact fee program is. And then a public hearing. The fees are adopted by the city council, does not go to a vote, other than a vote of council, and then a resolution, and then adopting the fee, and 60 days after adopted, the fees can be levied and start collecting them. I think that that's just a reiteration of the flow chart there. And so I'm open for questions, any discussion?
Counsel?
I'm good. When are we going to start working on this?
Well, and that is my question, because, I mean, that is a good question. When would we work on this? If we don't see anything coming down the pike for four or five years because we have no water, is it still the time to do it now?
So you don't have any development that you see on the horizon for the next five years and that there's no water for it anyway?
Right. I mean, because you say we were supposed to review them in five to 10 years.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, how long does the process take? Let's say we were serious.
Oh, probably three to four or five months. You know, that's not that long. It's, again, it's collecting the information and communications with staff to make sure that we have, you know, a good idea of what the growth impacts are. And I understand that, you know, there's, many communities we work for don't have a lot of growth, but they anticipate that something would happen over the next five, six months.
Sure. I mean, we kind of missed our, we kind of missed that.
Yeah. And the cities find that that's kind of what happened over the last, well, five years ago, there was no development anywhere, and then it started to pick up again, and now we're seeing a lot of cities want to catch up with impact fee studies. We're seeing quite a few of them.
But in general, it's collected at the permit, at the moment of the permit, when you pay your permit fees.
Yeah.
So we haven't missed our opportunity?
Well, yeah.
Technically not, but it's difficult sometimes to try to sell it to people that have had projects in the works for a number of months and they're about ready. You have to, yeah.
So when you determine how much is enough and how much is too much or not enough, you were saying in here where if the city charges too much or overcharges for these particular improvements, then we have to refund a certain amount? What if there's deleterious effects that we can't calculate or that you guys miss or that can't be seen or foreseen before the project? And then we come up to a certain point in time after the development has been built, how do we go about to collect those fees that we see are necessary for us to collect that we did not charge?
Yeah. Once you've issued a permit, that's pretty much, you're locked out.
It's a done deal.
Yeah.
Yep.
I never really have seen that situation where there was, you know, some facility impact that was missed. I mean, we pretty much know.
Really? You guys think of everything. You think of traffic, small, impact on the streets.
Yeah. All of those. Yeah, there are air quality impact fees out there. There's, you know, art in public place fees. I mean, the list could go on and on. It's, you know, basically, the only criteria is that it is a publicly owned facility, you know, and we try to keep to that.
I see.
Because that's what the legislation was for.
Okay.
You know, affordable housing is a special case. A lot of cities have affordable housing in lieu fees, right? You know, you're required to have a certain number of your units that are affordable to a certain, you know, people with a certain income. And if they can't build those, they choose not to build those units. There is an in-lie fee. It's not really an impact fee because it doesn't indicate what the impact of that development is on affordability, other than to say, "Well, perhaps they're using up all the land or other facilities that affordable housing could go." So there's kind of a delicate connection there to be made, but affordable housing in lieu fee, those are established in the state, and, you know, we do those. There's a little bit higher bar now. There have been court cases that have tried to reel those in and make it a tighter analysis and nexus for those. But, yeah, we try to look at all the, you know, the major facility categories, like I mentioned, you know, the water, wastewater, traffic, you know, parks and police, fire, those are the typical ones that you go and...
You had commented about, you can't use it for maintenance and operation. So to maintain our roads that have potholes, we really couldn't do that, but if we, is that correct, first of all? Is that...
Yeah. Now, you're getting into some areas of road rehabilit, they allow a refurbishment, which I allow, or advise clients, that doing an overlay, if it's a substantial overlay, an inch overlay, is, qualifies, because it does increase the capacity of the road. I think filling potholes does too, because people would tend to drive faster if that's the, you know, the motivation. But, you know, what we're looking for is how to expand capacity. Usually that's adding in a couple of lanes, but improving a roadway and putting asphalt down on it, you know, that helps new development, it helps both. What I, we typically do is do a proportionality. Say, "Okay, it costs this much to do this road. How much benefit does it give to the existing residents? How much to new development?" And like, split it up, you know?
Yeah. I'd just, I'd like to see us get going on as soon as possible.
I agree.
I don't think we need to wait around anymore. I think we've waited way too long as it is, and this has been at the, at the beginning, we started talking about this years ago, and we missed out on a lot of projects that have been going on, and I'd like to see us go forward with it with your help or assistance.
And let me ask, road use fees, is that a whole different, something different? I mean, is that in your bailiwick?
Road use fees? Yeah, that's the same thing.
Okay.
As long as it's charged to a developer, if it's not like a toll road kind of thing.
No, 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 no. Okay, but if we have, you have heavy trucks building something and it's going through your town for a year.
We have done those for cities. It's part of like their, well, like for franchise agreements sometimes for refuse trucks, that's kind of included in that. If you have a franchise fee with a waste hauler, and that's part of that, okay, they're going to, you know, do so much damage to the road, that's part of that analysis, you know?
Public have anything to add or ask any questions?
How about Dennis? What do you think, Dennis? Long time overdue?
Good answer.
Yes, yes.
Get going forward on it as soon as possible.
No further questions?
All right. Thank you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
So moving forward to something like this, do we have to go out to bid or are there lots of people out there?
Yeah, there are lots of companies that do this. You would hire a firm that would basically, you know, you have to hire a firm that's going to conduct a cost of service fee, which determine what you need out there, what is reasonable to project forward. They'll then give you a cost of that, and then they would compute the cost, you know, they would bid for the whole package. So it's first conduct the study of what is the existing infrastructure, what's likely development, what do you need, how much will that cost? And then you come up with that cost, and then it's, you know, how much do you charge each new unit, or, you know, you divide it between commercial and residential, and you come up with that. If you don't do that, what we have right now is, the municipal code, we have a development agreement. So if a big development came in, it would be a negotiation between the council and the developer, and they'd have to pay fees pursuant to a development agreement, which is what happened in Hamilton Cove. You didn't have fees, you entered into an agreement, and that's how that came out, which is why they have to build or they have to supply a fire truck up there once they hit a certain, but they don't have to pay for the fire crews to man the fire truck.
Invisible fire truck.
Right.
And so, again, my question was more, for us to move forward, do we have to go out to bid because there's a bunch of people like Michael Baker?
Yes. Yeah, you'd have, you do a request for proposals for professional services.
Okay. So do we want, somebody want to make a motion, or do we just direct staff? How would you like to do that?
I think we direct staff.
We just direct staff.
Do we have consensus here? Councilman Sampson as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to, let's just, let's continue with our presentation. And next we have Jeff Lawrence.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council and staff. Jeff Lawrence, project manager for Southern California Edison. I'd like to give you an update on our Stage Two mandatory water rationing plan, as well as Stage Three and our desalination plant number two project. As of last Thursday, May 12, the Middle Ranch reservoir was at a water level of 183 acre feet. That is slightly below what we had forecasted last month, which at this point in time, we are forecasting an acre footage of about 189 acre feet, so about six acre feet below our last month's forecast. For the month of April, comparing to our baseline period, which was April of 2013, we were able to reduce water use by almost 36 percent. So we're still trending significantly above the 25 percent rationing level, but we have dipped below our trend line in the 40 to 43 percent range for reducing water use. This was in a month of April that saw a increase to visitor counts over the baseline period of 7.6 percent. It was actually a dip compared to last... It was actually a dip compared to last year, about 9,000 customers, visitors fewer than in April 2015.
So that means we're kind of using a little bit more water? Is that what that means?
Well, there's a number of factors that could lead to reservoir drawdown. There were some periods of time where, for the desalination plant preparations of the new plant, we had to take Plant One offline and send our water from the new plant off spec. Now that we have our permit and the plant's in service, we no longer have to worry about that concern. And then for the winter season, we had some unseasably warm months that could lead to evaporation as well.
Jeff, can I interject and ask a clarification question?
Sure.
It's my understanding that we are not yet producing additional water with a second decel unit. That they're both operational, they both can produce water, but that, we haven't received the permit to produce additional fresh water from brine. Is that correct?
So we have our amended permit issued for Plant Number Two to operate in seawater mode. And that's been in service since the end of April, and we've actually produced more than 2 million gallons of water since it's been placed in service. We are still working with the Division of Drinking Water for our amended permit for the brine mode. And that's targeted for mid-June still.
For mid-June?
Yeah. Yeah, Plant Number Two is in service producing water today. Looking at the last 12 months and comparing them to our baseline period, we've been able to reduce water use by 42.6%. This while visitor counts have been up over our baseline period by slightly over 26%. This amounted to a reduction of 164 acre feet, approximately about a seven or eight month supply of water during 2014 water levels. If you look at the entire period of time that we've been in Stage Two water rationing, which was dating back to August 2014, we've actually been able to reduce water use by 303 acre feet, about a year supply of water, and equivalent to 2014, a year supply of It's been a great help in staving off Stage Three. This slide is the number of water use violations that our code enforcement has cited in the city and in the county areas. Since the last month, we've had one new violation. So we're up to a total of 139 since we activated Stage Two water rationing. Apologies, I know this chart's a little tough to see. What you're looking at here is the billing periods that closed during the month, and of those billing, of those customer bills, how many of them mounted to a violation resulting in a flow restrictor being installed? And then how many of those customers are repeat offenders? This table does exclude the customers that received their first warning. And then you'll actually notice in the month of April, we're showing zeros across the board. That's because we activated our new fine structure, and so we reset the clock on those violations. So all the violations that are coming in the month of April are going to be considered a first warning. For the month of April, about 9% of the customer accounts that closed resulted in a warning. Through May 17th, we have, we have issued 437 flow restrictors for residential customers and 134 flow restrictors for commercial customers.
And on the commercial customers, is vacation rentals considered a commercial customer?
No, those are on a domestic rate.
And those are residential, right?
Is there any way to break those down? Those that are vacation rentals versus those that are just residential?
You know, I don't know enough about the tariff that governs domestic accounts and commercial accounts as far as vacation rentals go. I'd have to ask our regulatory folks about that.
Okay. I'm just curious if we're finding where those restrictors and the violations are coming from? If they're coming from vacation people or they're coming from the...
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
Or the actual residents of Avalon, you know?
Yeah, I don't know if there's an identifier for us to be able to tell. I think they all show up as a domestic account, but I'll certainly look into that.
Okay.
So an update on our desalination plant number two. As I mentioned before, the decel plant number two has been in service since the end of April, and we're happy to report that we produced over 2 million gallons of drinking water thus far, and continue to produce water on a daily basis from Plant Number Two. We're still on schedule to also receive our amended permit for the brine mode, and that's being scheduled for late June. And Division of Drinking Water is on board with achieving that date, and we're not expecting any hurdles at this point in time. For funding for the project, we continue to partner with the City of Avalon, looking for available funding sources that are out there, also looking at opportunities for retroactive recovery for this project. Additionally, we're finalizing contribution reimbursements from public agencies to minimize the impacts to our customers. And in terms of Stage Three, if you recall, last month, what we reported is that we'll continue at Stage Two water rationing levels, but we're going to reassess on a monthly basis. At this point in time, we have seen a slight dip in the water reduction numbers. The threshold that we've established is trying to maintain that 40% water reduction, and we've dipped slightly to 36% in the month of April. As I mentioned before, too, the reservoir level has dropped slightly below our forecast, but at this point in time, we're still going to remain at Stage Two water rationing levels. We don't want to knee jerk react here and activate Stage Three just because of the results we've seen for this month. So we're going to continue at Stage Two rationing levels. But what it may result in is if we continue to see these trends in the next month, we may have to implement Stage Three on an accelerated schedule. But at this point in time, we're going to continue with our Stage Two rationing levels and update you next month on, once we get the month results for May, on Stage Three for the summer.
Could Stage Three be something less than 50%?
There is that potential. So the CPC did approve our advice letter filing back in November. That does allow us to implement a lesser percentage than 50. A determination hasn't been made yet what that percentage would be, but we do have some flexibility there now. So we want to urge the community to continue with your rationing efforts. We want to get back to that 40% range. We also expect now that the Plant Number Two is in service in seawater mode, that we should be able to minimize some of the water that we're pumping to meet demand on a daily basis as well.
But doesn't it make sense that, you know, if there's another delay in permitting, you know, it makes sense for us to be in Phase Three? I mean, we need to reduce further.
There is that potential. Yeah, if the permit does slip into beyond late June, we do run that risk.
I mean, I agree, it's not the most popular solution, and we all feel the impacts of it, but...
We need to protect our...
Quite honestly, the reservoir is dropping rapidly.
Yeah.
And not being able to run that second plant in brine mode doesn't, we're not producing more water. We're still using the same amount of water.
Yeah, and the fortunate thing is for the month of June, where we're forecasting demand for the customers that are within the decel system, it does not exceed what we can produce from Plant Number Two in seawater mode. Where we start exceeding the production capability in seawater mode is in the month of July and August.
Okay.
So as long as we have that brine mode permit before July, when we start seeing our peak demand, we shouldn't have any more drawdown from the reservoir due to demand.
Jeff, have you guys done any back-of-the-envelope calculations on what it would take in the wintertime to pump the water from here up to Wrigley? The excess?
To pump the water where? I'm sorry.
Up to Wrigley? Wrigley Reservoir?
From the decel plant, what it would cost from a cost standpoint to install the pipeline?
How much did the energy cost to be to get up there?
I believe there's an issue there with pumping treated water into an open water reservoir. I don't think...
Isn't that a treated water reservoir?
The...
It's treated a pump house, and then it goes into the Wrigley.
But then you're pumping treated water into the reservoir pre-treatment?
No, no, Wrigley, not...
Oh, into Wrigley?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I'm not sure if operations has looked into that. Only I'd have to get back to you on that.
I mean, right now, the only people really drawing down the reservoir are Hamilton and Middle Ranch.
Right.
And if we could take care of the Hamilton by building up Wrigley in the wintertime, because we do have excess capacity. So something to look at.
What percentage is the decel plant provide to the city? I mean, is that when it's at full capacity for the water usage for the city?
Well, excluding Hamilton Cove, what we're forecasting right now is that in seawater mode, we can meet demand on a daily average basis up until mid-July.
Okay.
And then we start to see some spikes that exceed what Plant Number Two can produce in seawater mode. So it's 100% up until mid-July.
So that's good for the city with the decel gone. So how does our reservoir keep dropping, then? Is it because of the other usage from the other parts of the island?
There's a...
Is that what's helped drawing besides Hamilton Cove and the other entities and the cities and the ISMS and those places? So that's where most of the water's getting drawn from, correct?
So there's a number of factors that contribute to reservoir drawdown. You have those customers at Hamilton Cove and Middle Ranch, as we mentioned before. There were times where, for testing purposes, we did have to have Plant Number One offline because we're sending water through Plant Number Two and sending it off spec. So there were times where we weren't producing water in the last couple of months. Additionally, there's environmental factors. There's evaporation, there's seepage, the underground hydrology, those can affect, that can affect reservoir drawdown as well.
Okay, thank you.
Now that we're getting into our busy tourist season, we're going to be refreshing the collateral materials to all the restaurants and hotels. Whoops. So the placard that you see on the slide there, we'll continue to distribute those to the local businesses to get the word out to the visitors. Additionally, we're going to be starting a media campaign, marketing campaign in the local newspapers, local cable television channel, and then also online, to make sure that everyone in the community is aware that it's really critical to continue rationing water at your current levels to avoid Stage Three, as well as get the word out to the visitors to the So this slide is our updated Middle Ranch reservoir water level forecast. So this is reflective of the water level at 183 acre feet. And as you can see, the red line is our reservoir drawdown from our three-year historical forecast. The blue line is our 25% rationing, and where we've been able to forecast, because of the positive results we've seen from Stage Two, is the top line, the purple line, which is our 40% rationing forecast. And that's where we want to remain. As you can see, the reservoir level come fall is about 50 acre feet higher if we can continue at the 40% rationing level. If we dip into that 25% or below, it's going to be a significant drawdown in the reservoir. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Does the public have any comments or questions? Jim Luke Johansson?
Last time you were here, Jeff, you made a point about the, and actually mentioned it again tonight, about the peak use days coming forward in July. And I think I asked at the time if those were predictive, and they weren't quite predictive. But my mind keeps turning on this. And I wondered if, separate from those specific dates, if there's a pattern that's predictive? That because we have so many visitors who leave the island on a Sunday, that Mondays are a particularly high-use day or something like that, where, again, we as residents could be observant of what we do on a certain day of the week or don't do on a certain day of the week to help forestall that further?
Yeah, I would say, just looking at the 2015 water sales and the water that we pump from Wrigley, those high-peak days are generally fallen on Fridays and Saturdays during the months of July and August. I don't know what the correlation is with events that were hosted by the city on those weekends. So to that degree, I can't really say it's predictive, but it's generally those weekends in those two months.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There was a visitor to Avalon that I was talking to the other day and said that, you know, they come every year to that ball that was this weekend. And she said, you know, she went to the vacation people and said, you know, "It takes two minutes to get hot water to my sink." And perhaps if people would install those water things, because those folks aren't capturing water to water the gardens like we are.
Instant hot water.
Yeah, the instant hot water things. And maybe something like that would be something we could encourage people to do to help use some water up, you know, or to reduce that by somewhat, anyway.
That's a significant amount of savings, those inline water heaters.
Mm-hmm. Anyway.
Maybe that's something that we can look into for our building code.
Ah, sure.
We could make that some kind of policy, you know, because we haven't done a lot as far as that goes for our policy. And I haven't heard anything about Cisterns either as well, which was mentioned before, our new projects coming in. So maybe we can talk about that in the future. That's a great idea. It's good to mention that.
Okay. Excellent. We are on item three, and Adra?
Good evening. I'm waiting for them to make it a full screen. Oh, look, it's messed up anyhow. Hello. As you recall, a couple of months ago, the City Council authorized us to go ahead and hire Michael Baker for the purpose of a citywide income survey. The reason for the income survey is that over the past few years, the State of California and other state and federal agencies have revamped their funding and grant programs. Many of the agencies have developed disadvantaged community language in their grant programs. If a community is designated as disadvantaged, the level of grant funds can increase, in some cases, by 50% and have a zero match, so there would be no money that the city would have to pay. There are also some grant programs that would prohibit communities from submitting competitive grants if they don't have the disadvantaged community designation. The recent passage of Proposition One provides a substantial funding for water-related projects in the State of California, and this is actually something that staff has been working on with Edison in trying to find water opportunities that we can go after together. And the disadvantaged community designation is one of the stumbling blocks the city finds themselves in. So Prop One, all of the funding opportunities in Prop One have a disadvantaged community component. Other grant programs that determine funding levels based on disadvantaged communities include the Active Transportation Program and Community Development Block Grant Funds. And as more and more notices of funding come out, disadvantaged communities are a high priority. So this is a screenshot of the Proposition One disadvantaged community map. And it's kind of a filtered map, so you click on a little box, and then it kind of outlines what you're looking for. So the map shows that Avalon is in the proposition, Avalon and Catalina Island is in the Proposition One funding area. When you go to the next slide and you put the filter on for disadvantaged community, you'll see that Avalon, if you see like the gold and the brown, those are disadvantaged communities. Avalon and Catalina Island is not.
So I'm sorry, what was the difference between the first screen and the second screen?
So the first screen shows the area that's eligible for funding under Prop One.
Oh, the whole area?
The whole, so, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I got it.
Okay. And then the second, the second slide shows that Avalon doesn't have any, or the island have any disadvantaged community. Funding agencies allow communities to perform independent income surveys to challenge the data that they use to develop the DACs. DAC is the acronym for the disadvantaged community. All funding agencies rely on data collected from the 2010 census, which has been criticized for its lack of accuracy. To that end, the US Census Bureau changed its data collection process in 2005, wherein they collected sample data instead of total population information. So they went from a total nationwide count to a 10% sample. And we believe that because so many homes in Avalon are vacation homes, the numbers can be easily skewed. The difference between the 80% state median household income, which is a qualifier, and the state of Avalon is only $3,471. So it's a very low number, and the census data has an error of margin between 10% and 11%. 10 and 11%. So the headline here says, "Please participate in income survey." The purpose of the survey the city is going to be releasing in the next few weeks will help determine if the city is a disadvantaged community and will help with grant applications for, but not limited to, water projects, sewer projects, street projects, projects that promote sustainability, and active transportation projects, pedestrian and bike facilities. This, as we all know, the city heavily relies on grants to help and, uh, with these big infrastructure projects. So some important things to know about the survey. The surveys will be mailed out to all of the Avalon households in the next two weeks. You can fill the, the, uh, survey out on the paper and turn it back in, or you can take the survey online and there'll be a link on the, um, the paper survey mailed out, and there'll also be a QR code. The survey is completely confidential and no responses will be shared with any other government or private agency, and your name is not on the survey. And the surveys will be sent out in both English and in Spanish. So what type of questions will be asked in the survey? Family size, household in, income demographics, do you live in Avalon full-time? Do you work in Avalon? And we added one, which is ferry travel information. The reason we did that is that the city has, um, been pursuing additional funding for the commuter subsidy program, and we, uh, partnered with Metro to, um, to ask them what kind of information they would like to see that would maybe help bolster our, our case for, for that effort. The next steps, the city will be at Avalon Schools, um, open house next week, May 25th, to pass out information regarding the income survey. Um, the surveys will be sent out to all the households in Avalon. After those are received, um, they'll be reviewed, and then after the review and, um, they'll, they'll figure out where they're missing. And then a bilingual MBI staff will canvass the addresses not captured via email or online and, um, ask those people to fill out surveys. And then MBI will disseminate the data and present the information at a city council meeting. Any questions?
So this, the way this is being sent out will exclude people that own a home here and don't live here? They will be excluded?
Yeah, well, well, it's going to go out to all the households, but then it'll be, it'll be reviewed and disseminated. And actually, we partnered with, um, Lori Montgomery, and we sent, um, all of the CUP data to her, and then she, or she sent it all to MBI so that they could filter out the vacation rentals.
Okay. Or the people that don't live here full-time?
Right. Mm-hmm.
Is it possible, um, to get a one-page marketing piece that we could?
We have it.
Okay.
And, um, it's going to be going, the press release is going to be going to the papers tomorrow. I'll email it to all the council.
Great.
And yes, there is also a campaign that way as well.
And people will be going to the churches, maybe, and-
The churches and the senior center and, yeah, we will be hitting the streets too. The first effort, though, is to get the, the survey out in the mail and, and, and for those who choose to do it online. And then after all that's done and the addresses are kind of compiled, then we'll know where, what we're missing. And, and the, the CUP data is, the transient rail data is really important and has been a big part of all of this.
Can they have a drop-off point as well as a mail back unless?
Absolutely.
Okay, just in case we're not providing the stamp, and I don't know if we were going to provide the stamp.
No, but we'll, we'll have either a box and, and at the post office or up at, here at City Hall or something. We're going to make it easy, hopefully, for everybody.
And who's going to actually do this?
The actual, um, Michael Baker International is going to send over a bilingual, um, person that will hit the streets.
Oh, sweet.
To have an iPad and-
Sounds like a lot better than the way census data is done.
Yes.
Much more thorough.
Okay, and then just, I urge everyone to, um, participate in the survey. It's very important to our community.
It is very important. Thank you, Adra.
I'm still here. You get me again.
Yes.
Okay, so this is the next topic, which is, um, information on the city of Avalon's new transit program, which is going to begin on June 1st. And I just want to, um, say thank you to Transportation Concepts, our new operator, and CTS, our, uh, old operator, for all of their assistance and cooperation. And it's, it's, it's been really nice, so I just wanted to start with that. So this is, um, one of our dial or ride vehicles, which was just branded today. And there'll be two of those on the island. They may go to the barge as soon as tomorrow, so you'll be seeing them in the community. So the dial or ride will be operated by Transportation Concepts, and there'll be two new dial or ride vans. The offices will be located at 308 Crescent, which is the former taxi stand. The office hours will be Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00. The phone number, which I know the whole community has been waiting for to call for dial ride, will be 310-510-0081. If you're a TDD hearing impaired, um, user, you can call 310-510-0086. Current dial or ride passengers do not need to register, so just call 0081 and they'll come and get you. If you're a new user, you must register, and there is a, a form that will be online and also down at the taxi stand. There'll also be forms up here at City Hall to make it convenient. And you have to be 65 years of age. Uh, the dial or ride will operate seven days a week, beginning at 7:00 AM and ending at 6:30 PM. Dial or Ride is a curb-to-curb, immediate request, shared ride pair transit service. Fares, uh, within the city is, are $2, $4 to Pebble Beach and Hamilton Cove. Valid, unexpired, purple dial or ride tickets will be honored in lieu of the $2. That's depending on the city council's action on another item on consent. But we feel it's really important for the people that are using the dial or ride to be able to use their valid tickets. And this is our new e-bus, which has been named the Garibaldi. It'll be a fixed route operated by Transportation Concepts, and that is, the wrapping on that started today, so that's very exciting. Um, it will operate seven days a week and the fare will be $1. The service will start at the Cabrillo Mall at 7:20 AM, which should tie in with the arrival of the first boat arriving in Avalon. Two buses will be in service during the high season with a 20-minute headway for downtown and a 40-minute headway to the Memorial Gardens. So what that means is that there'll be one bus that'll just be doing the, the downtown route, and then there'll be another bus that'll do partial downtown route, and then it'll go up to the gardens. The first bus of the day, however, will run the route to the gardens to access the bus stops near the schools, school. So if a teacher is on the, the first boat, that first run will actually go up to the school. And then after that first run, it'll start running around 9:45 and it'll run till about 4:00 PM, which is about the, the peak time to get up to the, the gardens. I know this is really hard to see, but this is the stops for the downtown route. There's 20 of them. And, um, we are working on a really nice map, which will be ready by June 1st, hopefully before. And then this is the stops for the Wrigley Memorial Route. So it'll, it'll start at the mall and then it'll, it'll go up Canyon. And then-
How many, how many more, on that first stop thing, like when you're going from the mall, how many more stops or have any more stops been added than what was?
A lot more stops. So, um, so, so Transportation Concepts and I spent some time driving around, and they came up with a proposed route. And then the, the fire chief and Denise and I, um, did the route ourselves, and we tweaked it a little bit based on some of Mike's concerns and Denise's concerns. But the goal is, is to, to make it, to have enough stops to make it worthwhile. There's now stops in front of Vons in the post office where there weren't before. Um, there's stops at, um, on Upper Clarissa, Lower Clarissa, uh, Third Street. There's, there's quite a few more stops. And then there also are more stops, um, up Canyon too. So there's a stop right before the, right when you come around the corner here, there's a red zone. So that'll be a stop if you're a, a teacher that's going to the high school building and then just past the, the entrance to the elementary school, the lower playground or the lower parking lot, there's another stop there. So we, we were trying to take into account everybody's use, not just the visitor, which is hard to do. Um, it's really hard to see on this map, but you'll see there's, um, arrows and, and blue lines and, and stops. So the blue line, the blue lines are the downtown route, and then the red lines are the, the up Canyon route. And, uh, Cali and the Chamber of Commerce has been kind enough to let us use this map. So we're trying to get it in an Illustrator file so that we can clean it up, and then it'll be the same map that everybody sees for the visitor's guide and for the transit. It'll, it'll, I think it'll make it a lot easier for, for our visitors. Now, the Avalon Access will also be operated by Transportation Concepts, and Avalon Access is an ADA complimentary pair transit, which is required by law for individuals who are unable to use the Garibaldi's service due to disability. And the Access will use the same vans as the dial or ride, and it will, it will allow for reservations up to three days in advance. It does require an application for all individuals unless they are already enrolled in the Los Angeles County Access Program. Next steps. Uh, Transportation Concepts and city staff will be visiting the senior congregate meals, Beacon Hill Apartments, CMC staff this week, um, with information regarding the dial or ride, the Garibaldi, and Avalon Access. Um, we'll be issuing a press release to the local newspapers regarding the new transit program, and I think that's it. Do you have any questions? Oh, and Ernesto's in the audience, and those are the new uniforms that Avalon Transit will be wearing. It's the blue shirt with the, the fancy logo. And I'd like to thank the, um, council members that sat on the committee and, um, design committee, along with Jim Luke Johansson, um, was really great.
So we're, are we planning some kind of a ribbon cutting and the town can come out and everybody can get rides and that kind of thing?
We, we are. We're, we're looking at July. We're looking at trying to-
Fourth of July?
Well, not, not the, not the Fourth of July, but it would be kind of cool to run a bus down in the parade. I mean, right?
That's a great idea.
That'd be a bad idea.
That's a really great idea.
Put the bus in the parade.
The bus in the parade.
Extra staff, Ernesto, on the Fourth of July. Um, and, um, we're trying to kind of coordinate it with the supervisor, Kenavi's, he's already planning on being here. We're just trying to figure out how it's going to work out because there's some key metro staff that were, um, really, uh, a crucial piece of getting this. So we want to make sure that we can invite everybody and it works for everybody. So there is definitely a ribbon cutting in the future.
Great.
Just no date yet.
Are we going to be, uh, fully up and going for the mechanics? Do we get all the stuff they need?
We're, we're, we're working on it, yes.
So when they come here, they're going to have all the tools to be able to-
Well, when they, when they get here, they're, they're ready to go, and then the, the first time they'll have to be lifted up will be 45 days. So-
But that's not here yet. That, all the equipment for them to work on is not-
No, we're, well, we're working on it. It'll be coming back at another council meeting.
Okay. Adra, I know how hard you worked on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
The buses look great, and I think the program's going to work really nice. Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
All righty. Uh, now we'll go back up to announcements. City manager?
I have two, after Denise. You have announcements or?
Oh, announcements?
I have two, but I'm sorry, you, I was waiting for Denise. Oh, okay. Um, I would first like to announce that on Saturday, this coming Saturday, May 21st, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM down on South Beach, the Rotary Club of Avalon will be having its inaugural chili cook-off. Um, again, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM, there'll be games and local chili and salsa, um, cook-offs as well as in, in internationally recognized, um, chili cook-off. So-
Nice.
Hopefully Joe's going to help and participate with us a little bit that day.
Absolutely.
And, uh, so anyway, this Saturday on South Beach, and tickets are only $10. And it is a very family-friendly event, so please, $10, come on down. Um, then on Sunday, May 22nd, from 12:00 to 4:00 PM at the M Restaurant, catered by Zest, will be a fundraising benefit for the Prince Savoy family. Uh, for those that are not readily knowledgeable, Samantha Prince is our visitor services manager for the Chamber of Commerce and is instrumental in the amount of support that she gives to every business and, and members of our community. So, um, there'll be raffle prizes, craft games, taco bar, uh, and that will be this Sunday at the M Restaurant from 12:00 to 4:00. Thank you.
Great. Councilman?
No, I just had a, somebody stopped me today. Interesting question about the drones. They've been seeing drones run around Avalon. I haven't seen too many myself, but I don't know, Scott or Denise? They would like to know if there's any regulations within the city limits about the drones. I said, "I will ask the question." I don't know. Um, hoping to see if we could find out and maybe get back to them, give them some information on it. I don't know if you got complaints on it?
I have not received any complaints, Richard, but-
We don't have anything specific on the books. Um, what I can do is, uh, the next meeting, I can just provide the council information on what the city can do to regulate zones, uh, drones. It is, um, somewhat limited because the FAA has, uh, you know, preemption on, on it, but we can provide that information to you.
Okay.
Was she, like, not happy with them?
No, they, they're just, they just wanted to know. They were just wondering if there's any regulations and so.
Okay.
Oh, Jim.
And I apologize, Denise, if I failed to forward those. We have received a couple of complaints from visitors who were renting, um, in particular at Hamilton Cove with the steep upslope where a drone was going by right even with where they were.
Oh.
And, you know, "Could it be seeing into my bedroom? Could it be?"
Oh.
So it's, it has come up. Not at a great, great frequency, but it has come up.
Thank you. Yeah, there we go.
Did you want to talk about your baseball team?
Oh.
We're good.
Your baseball team is good?
We're good. We're good. We're in the playoffs on Friday.
Yes.
Little world ship, but we're doing well.
Yes. Councilmember Sampson?
Yeah, um, Jim Felix passed away, so from the council to the Felix family, we want to extend our condolences and our heartfelt, um, sadness for the loss of Jim Felix. He was a big part of our family. And, um, I don't know anything about his ceremony yet, but, um, just, our heart goes out to you and your family. Um, another announcement, that's really not an announcement, it's kind of an inquiry about, um, um, this hose that's been stretched out across the street up here. Um, so there's been a lot of complaints, emails have been sent, phone calls have been made, um, there's been a lot of reaching out. I'm wondering if we need to, um, extend, um, our ordinance to, into the, um, fine area because I think there's been given like seven, seven different, uh, um, requests that we have that removed, and it just keeps coming back. And then we get a promise that it's going to be gone, and it keeps coming back. Um, it's potential hazard for the school kids, for people in the chair, on wheelchairs that are trying to get to and from the hospital, kids riding down the road in their skateboards, um, people, uh, there's, there's been, um, somebody actually tripped on it. So what do we need to do from this point on to make sure that, um, that this can be, um, mitigated? This, this concern, um, not just for the liability for us and the school and, and everybody that uses the road, but, um, for the future of, of the potential hazard that it poses?
So the council may recall that about a year ago, you amended your code to allow for an administrative citation, so that if someone's doing something that is against the code, the code enforcement can go out and just issue a ticket for it. It's a civil fine. And so you have that ability, um, and then you all, obviously, you also have always the ability to file a criminal action. And it, we'd have to just look at the municipal code, find a particular section that it violates. If we don't find anything, then it'd be a nuisance. And again, um, you do have ability, um, if that's council's, um, thought, to, uh, look at enforcing, uh, the rules through the administrative citation process. And again, you authorized that about a year ago.
It's a pretty high level of disrespect when, um, when the city manager reaches out multiple times, four, five, six, I don't know how many times, um, complaints have been, um, given. So I, I think, um, I would- So I think I would ask the council that we, if, people respond when you hit them in the pocketbook. So if we could start implementing a fine, if the thing reappears again, I think it might be a good idea before we get sued for somebody actually having a bad accident up there. I would like to look for your direction or ask for your direction on this, if you have any input. I'd be open-minded to hear it. But at this point, it's pretty blatant what was going on and we just, we just need it to stop, that's all.
Does the city manager have any comment?
Well, we sent the letter last Wednesday, I believe, and I was wondering if Joe has seen that hose since Wednesday.
Yeah, I have it right here in front of me.
Have you seen the hose in the last week?
Have I seen the what?
Have you seen the hose in the last week since we sent the letter?
No, I have not since we, no. But, but this company said that they would comply weeks ago, multiple times that they would comply and the hose keeps showing up again. So, I mean, if we don't have to impose a fine, that's okay, but I don't want to take any more of my time or get any more phone calls or worry about children that are going to become hauling down that hill or maybe someone in a wheelchair that needs to get up to the hospital and they can't get over the hose. That's, it's pretty plain and simple what the hazard poses in that particular area. I don't understand the rationale behind it even being there, but I'm trying to be patient, as patient as I possibly can. I think hitting people in the pocketbooks in this would not be out of line if it happens again. But it would have to, the council would have to agree with me and that's what I'm asking right now.
Well, there's a couple of things. Number one, let's hope this problem has been resolved if you haven't seen it since that letter. That would be, that is the best. But I think then anything else, and this is just my opinion, not in enforcement mode, if that's what we have on the books, we should be doing that across the board to everyone and not, you know, just as things come up. I mean, we can't. If it's on the books, it's on the books and we can do these things.
Have we got any other complaints about any other obstructions like that?
Sometimes we get them because of people extending their electrical cord or something across the sidewalk, yes. And we notify them.
Okay. Well, let's just stick with our notification for now then. I don't want to complicate things too much.
Let's hope that problems are gone.
We can hope all we want. You know, the old saying. Okay, let's just call it at that. If it comes back again to us, we're going to start implementing fines. That's all there is to it. Okay? Thank you. That's, I believe that's my only announcements for right now. Oh, yeah, one other thing. I was getting some letters together for the Conservancy and for Edison and I'm still putting those together, just questions that we need to ask them that I would like answered. And they go kind of to the administrative level, so I wanted, I was requested to put these together by you mayor so that they have a heads up on exactly what. They're able to prepare for the questions that I'm going to ask. So I will probably present those to Denise within, probably within a week before the next meeting at least, so that she can send those out. And then maybe in a couple meetings from now, we can have some people from either Edison and/or the Conservancy come up and answer those questions.
Right.
Yep. Thank you, guys. That's it for me.
Thanks, Joe.
Yes, sir.
Couple, three things. I seem to recall that there was an ordinance in the city that kids on a motorized device needs to wear a helmet. Is that not true? Or is it a state? And there's a lot of kids riding on scooters, on motorized skateboards and, you know, they're doing, going pretty fast and they're just getting ready to bob down the edge.
Ollie, I think that's a sheriff's law. It's California State law.
California? If in fact that law does exist, could we ask for some enforcement?
I'll add that to Doug's list. The mayor and I will be meeting with Doug sometime next week.
I think the fire department was giving out helmets too. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I think, do you guys give out helmets still for kids, for skateboarders and bicyclists? Because I think kids are supposed to wear helmets on their bikes too, but it's really hard to get them to do it. I know it's hard for me to get my boy to do it, but...
We do. We have a donation program where we raise funds to give away free helmets to kids. And the only catch to it is mom or dad has to come down with them. We just do a little quiz with them, educate them a little bit about helmets and how it's important to wear them. And we bring mom or dad down so that they can help make sure that they're wearing them when they should be, but they're available. All they need to do is come by.
That's great.
Cool. That's good.
Thanks, chief.
Last weekend, I attended the California Contract Cities Seminar in Palm Springs someplace, Friday, Saturday, 8:00 in the morning to 8:00 at night. Some really good things, but there's one that was fairly scary and I'm sure Mike knows about this. The LA County Fire Chief made a presentation talking about El Nino and he had a little slide that you can't see worth beans, but it's got all the real high fire areas in LA County. And it's in the footage like you expect, it's over in Palos Frisito you expect, but there's also a big blotch over Avalon and I'm really concerned about that. Did you see, you seen this one?
I have. I was, attended the LA area Fire Chiefs meeting a while back and Avalon is certainly no different than a lot of other communities in the county and the state and even the southwest United States that we're a small beach community with houses that are very close together, surrounded by brush. So yes, I'm familiar with the fact that we're in a high fire danger zone.
Is there anything else the residents can do?
Pardon me?
Is there anything else the residents can do in preparation of the upcoming...
Our recommendation is always to have vegetation cleared as far away from your property as you can. Do whatever you can to make your house fire safe, keep lumber stacked away. A lot of that comes down to just good housekeeping. And I have a whole list of things that people can do to protect their property if they'd like to see it. I'll put it out in the weekly update if you like. Probably the biggest challenge here is that a lot of the recommendations are about clearing your property for 100 feet in all directions. Most of us have, that's 15 houses in all directions for us. So some of the recommendations don't really apply here, but I'll certainly include that in this week's update.
And we also got to hear a presentation from Metro about the upcoming sales taxes. We had a ballot in November, $120 billion worth of revenues. Unfortunately, we're kind of cut out of that scene. They haven't made our bucket any bigger. So when we see Metro guys, we've got to talk to them about that because we are paying that tax. All of us are paying that tax.
Why don't you bring it up and I'll continue?
It's been brought to my attention, I think all the council's attention, there continues to be some unsavory incidences at Casino Point perpetrated by kids out there drinking and smoking. And there was a girl that went to the hospital, what, last week, last Friday?
Last Friday, Saturday.
Friday, Saturday. We had a meeting today with the island company and the island company stated that if we ask them, they will close the gate to the parking lot in the evening time to cut down the amount of partying on Casino Point. And I would like to ask concurrence that we direct staff to ask the island company to close the gate to the parking lot.
I mean, you know, when we had that, we had that choices meeting recently and Rhonda was there and, you know, you hear Father Peroni and then you hear Rhonda going out there and saying there's, there's just a lot of young people, as young as 12 and 13 years of age out there and they're till late. And so perhaps in the initial discussion was, you know, closing, you know, they can decide when, but maybe it's after the movie's over. But, you know, post it for a while that this will start happening. It would still allow the divers to go and to do their night dives because they can take the path and they can still leave, but it might, you know, it might be a little bit of a deterrent and I know the discussion is, well, they're just going to find somewhere else to go. But if you can start dispersing them a little bit and then the community through this organization, with all of us working together, find alternatives to kids. If we have a multi-approach attack on the situation. Because the other thing is you've got 12 and 13-year-olds out there with 40 and 50-year-olds that are drinking and smoking. And that's just not, it's just, it's not normal.
It's not good parenting.
Sending a message.
Yeah, and so if we, whatever we could do, if you, I mean, there was a discussion even about changing curfew back to 10:00 in the summer. I, you know, I don't feel strongly one way or the other. If law enforcement, I believe, is walking around and perhaps walking more than driving to visualize things a little bit better and instead of maybe just sometimes passing them up, that might help. But we can all set that policy on what we want to do with the law enforcement. But if there's no problem with us maybe asking the island company to consider closing Casino Point.
Hmm. A multifaceted approach to this is definitely, I think, a good thing. Closing the casinos, it just means that the good people that utilize those facilities aren't going to be able to go out there. Yeah, there's too much partying going on out there, so...
It's not like close at 5:00 or anything like that.
It's still, like you said, the night divers, they're supposed to carry their baggage over there or when someone's taking a night stroll. So you can still go out there then, right? Correctly?
You just have to drive and park your car and keep it out there until 11:00, 1:30 at night.
Yeah, maybe that's part of the multifaceted approach, better parenting from what I've heard. You know, parents actually being responsible. I know the police does do bike patrols out there on a regular basis. Maybe we can talk to Doug and have him just, you know, be a little more diligent about having the cops show up out there, but you know where the kids are going to go everywhere else. This particular thing, which I'm glad you brought it up, Ollie, it speaks loud to us as policymakers. What do we have for them to do? Okay, so maybe we can start thinking in the direction of, we really probably need to put a priority on a recreation center, kind of a, something that's, that has, that covers all the things that the kids like to do. So, and it's exciting and fun and, you know, it's on us kind of a little bit. So we're part of the solution as well, so.
With that, okay. Oh, chief, okay. Well, that was, I don't know if you're...
Are you reading my mind?
I think so. But go ahead.
The fire department would just want to be involved in any discussions about that gate being closed, especially when there's a large amount of divers out there. We don't want to be delayed with getting out there and the gate's locked or closed or both. So we'd just like to be involved in that.
Definitely you would have keys.
But time is the essence in those situations out there. Or have a guard there during when it's locked.
Can you remember? How did it work last time when they locked it for a period of time? I think it was for the same reasons? Was that a...
Been a while.
Can you remember how that?
That's when my husband was out there. I don't remember.
When there has been situations where they've wanted to limit access to the parking lot with vehicles, they've closed the gate, but it hasn't been locked. But then it turns into an enforcement issue. If there are people that have opened the gate and are out there that aren't authorized to be, then that's an issue for the property owner and the police possibly.
So we'll definitely include you in these conversations, chief.
I want to add to whatever letter or conversation that we have, that there's another solution too, and that would be to install some lighting in the back of the casino area.
We discussed that as well.
Because that would eliminate it. I mean, the teenagers that want to go and party aren't going to go where it's very well lit, so.
We talked about lighting the day and night. On that same note, I thought there was cameras out there. I thought we had cameras out that area by the harbor and stuff. I thought we had cameras out there also.
That's on the harbor side, but not on the back side.
Like right there by the dock. But there was also, but there was also right, yeah, right in there.
But the parties are around the backside.
On the opposite side?
On the opposite, discount side, yeah.
I don't know where the parties are.
Well, great. That's good. Thank you, council. I like the consensus on that. Oh, I would also like to mention that Phil Scott passed away, married to Tammy Scott, who was in code enforcement for a number of years, and Phil worked for the city as well. So he will be missed. Okay. Ollie's going to have a birthday tomorrow and he's going to be 65. You're welcome. And Denise is going to have a birthday on Friday and I don't know how old she's going to be.
She's joining the club. 39.
Okay, and my birthday's on Monday and I'm going to be 64. Okay, so let's get those over.
Happy birthday to y'all, you guys.
Happy birthday, you guys.
Okay, but on a more serious note. We had, we'd had some place a discussion about honoring all of the residents of Avalon that are in their 90s, the non-agenarians. And so we'll probably be putting something in the paper, but basically we would invite, like to invite all of those people that are 90-plus to participate in the Fourth of July Parade. We will find a vehicle that will accommodate them. We plan to have a banner with their names and the year of their birth. But if their families are listening or if you are listening out there and you'd like to participate, we'd love to have you. You can contact City Hall at 3105-100220. We would like the name, the, just a little bit of information, you know, born and raised here kind of a thing, just four or five little facts about you would be wonderful. And then we would also need your phone number and your P.O. box so that we can keep in And I don't know, Denise, if we wanted to add anything else about contact. We'll put more in the paper so they can get in touch with us. So thank you and I hope you will all join us. And tomorrow I will be going with Captain Federal to the LA County Sheriff's Memorial. It's a solemn occasion where they honor the fallen sheriffs in the last year and some of them back to 1934. So I will be spending the day with the captain tomorrow and Tim Winslow will be joining us.
I have one thing to announce.
Yes.
And that is, next council meeting on June 7th, I just, another reminder that we will be having a big presentation on residential D-SAL units, the procedure and problems with the processing, et cetera. And that will be with Best Bestin Krieger as well as Ron Height from Southern California Edison and City Staff.
Right. Excellent.
Ron Height, I think.
Okay. Oral communication.
I actually had an important announcement. I was asked by Councilmember Sampson to provide an update on the Vons project because it's not up and, not up and running yet.
Thank you.
And so the last action taken by the city was on February 17th of this year where the Planning Commission approved a tentative parcel map. If you recall, one of the conditions of approval was that the lot be large enough. And so that required the island company and Vons to enter into a real estate transaction. That parcel map was delayed at least four times before the city council because the island company and Vons couldn't come to an agreement. And until that parcel map is finalized, we can't do anything on the project. So there was about a six to seven month delay while that discussion was going on. They presented us, so the Planning Commission approved the tentative parcel map. The next step is a final parcel map. They've given us a proposed final parcel map that was not acceptable because it didn't include all the information that you're required to have. And so they have hired a surveyor. The surveyor did the work on May 12th and that map has been recently submitted to the city and we're looking at that for approval. Once that approved, then the map can be recorded with the county recorder and the sale of the property completed. So city hasn't been, you know, we've been encouraging it, we kept putting it on the agenda and it got delayed, 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 delayed. So we are going forward. It's nothing the city did, it was, you know, they couldn't get the materials done before the Planning Commission.
Yeah, according to Vons, it was, they've been waiting for us.
Well, again...
So that's what Carlos then got...
They may have been waiting the last, you know, I mean, again, because we rejected an improper map is not a delay on...
Yeah, it's not on us.
The other thing I would say is that they have submitted plans that are currently under plan check with the city's engineer. And so they've also submitted grading plans, which are also under review through the plan check. Actually, the construction plans are being reviewed by Eskill, the grading plans by the city engineer. However, none, no final permits can be issued, no work can be done until the sale between Vons and the island company is complete. And that has what has been the cause of the delay.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make certain that the record was clear on that.
The reason I'm pushing this forward is because I'd like to see this project go forward in a timely manner, but also I'd like to see those windows put in to the homes before they start breaking ground and making a bunch of dust in that area so people don't have to deal with the noise and the dust that's going to be caused from that.
And the sentence I left out is they are meeting with the people... And the sentence I left out is they are meeting with the people in the two streets to talk about the window project. So that is, they are meeting with them. I don't know where they are in the actual installation of them. So that is going forward. The other announcement I had, just so you know, is the city's funding for the D-SAL plant. We're going to be coming to you with an amended agreement to get some $500,000 from the county in addition to the city's. Kenabi wants to make certain that a million dollars from the city and the county are toward the project, so we're going to have to amend the agreement. And the other thing is the agreement says that Avalon will pay $500,000 upon certain conditions being met by Edison, and those are the plant is operating within how it's designed. And so in order to do that, we need the design plans, we need to understand that. And so we've hired someone, it's less than $5,000, to look at those plans, to make certain that the plant is actually producing water as in the agreement, and then we'll pay the $500,000. We sent letters to Edison asking them for the information that we need. We don't have a response yet, but I want you to know that we are, you know, complying with our agreement, we're seeking information, but we're not going to, we can't pay Edison $500,000 just because the brine part is working. The brine part has to be working in conjunction with the design capabilities of the project, and we need to evaluate that. So just wanted to let you know that that's what we're doing on that aspect.
Excellent.
That's it.
Mayor, I apologize, but I was only originally doing announcements. I didn't realize we were doing our council member reports.
I know, and just doing the whole thing.
So I have one other that I wanted to announce, which is that I believe it is four Planning Commission seats that are coming available in June. There is an announcement in the paper, five, the alternate as well. So I'd like to encourage members of the community who wish to get into service work or add to their current service work to look at the, get an application and bring that up to City Hall. I also am curious what the date is that we will be discussing the RFP for the Shoreboat Service. Do we have a date for that yet?
I hope the first meeting in June.
Okay. Obviously, the concern is we're rapidly coming up upon the season, and this has been quite impactful for the Harbor Department and our staff out there, so wanted to make sure that we're ahead of the game. And then I did attend the Gateway Cities Council of Government meeting, as I do every month. The Los Angeles County Strategic Plan was made available, and thank you, Jordan, for disseminating that to the rest of the council members. That is available for public information as well, if anybody's interested. The unemployment rates have gone down another couple tenths of a percent, which is good for Avalon. And the actual Gateway Cities Council of Government, which is the 28 cities in the Gateway Region, have completed the Strategic Transportation Plan, which has been a long process underway. And this, the official copy that I received, I will give to Audra McDonald, and that also would be available for anybody who wants to see it. I encourage members of the council to read this as well. There is some impact for Avalon, and thank you again, Audra, for all of your efforts and help in Avalon's participation on that plan. Certainly hasn't gone unnoticed. And I will gladly be out of the country coming up, and I will miss the next Gateway Cities meeting and the Transportation Committee meeting, which are going to be critical information regarding a ballot measure. And so Audra has graciously agreed to sit in my seat for both of those meetings, and so Avalon will still be represented. So thank you again.
Okay, well, let's go back to reports. I kind of covered them all under, we pretty much did it, didn't we? Oral communication. Steve, you can stand up now. This is an opportunity for people of the community to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. We will limit you to three minutes and no action will be taken.
Good evening, Mayor Marshall and members of the council. I wanted to remind the community that Avalon Environmental Services, as we move into the peak season, we're going to be stepping up our collection of trash and recyclables. We know that this means there'll be more noise, and we are going to do our best to adjust routes and schedules so that we can mitigate that.
Great.
So you'll be making noise after 8:00?
We leave our facility at 7:00 a.m., Monday through Saturday. On Sundays, we're presently leaving at 6:30 in order to finish by 11:00 a.m. We will be increasing the hours. The quitting time on Saturday and Sunday is going to be later, and we may have the possibility of adjusting the schedules. But first and foremost, we have to get everything collected. We want to be efficient.
You have any job openings out there?
We don't.
You don't?
No.
You keep a pretty good staff then, don't you?
We have an excellent staff, and they've been with us for a very long time.
Yes, that's wonderful. Thank them.
You got a good crew. You guys do a great job.
They do a good job. They really do.
Thank you.
Steve, I just want to interject because this has been a conversation for about six years now, and that is the time of the collection. There is an impact. There is a noise impact, and it does affect our vacation renters, and it also affects our residents. And there was a point when previous city manager Ben Harvey was here that the route was adjusted for a period of time, and I welcome a conversation with you to potentially, you know, share that noise with other areas in town that may be changing the route, starting at Descanso, starting at Hamilton Cove, you know, looking at six months of the year, changing the route so that not the same residents in the same vacation rental homes are impacted by the noise seven days a week.
That's accurate, and we did adjust the route. We wanted to, the commissary out of Descanso had started up. We wanted to be sure we could get out there before it got busy. And we were doing it really more in the off-season. Now we're moving into peak season, so we're adjusting again. But we're still open to looking at routes and looking at schedules, and we know it's a noisy operation. We want to mitigate the noise.
I don't know how you can. I mean.
Well, you can. I mean, there's, you know, in the off-season, if you're running the same, are you running the same number of staff in the winter as you are in the summer?
Yes.
So.
We reduced the direct labor hours, but we had the same head count.
Right.
And we did, we did have some good luck and some success getting out to Descanso early, and we were able to do the, as we came back, we did the collections, and I think it did reduce the noise. But now we're in peak season, and the particular problem for us is Vons Express Alley. There's so much use there. You know, we're out seven days a week, 365 days a year. Very soon, we're going to be out to Vons Express Alley and other commercial locations like that three times a day, just to keep up. So with that kind of pressure, we do the best we can.
And you do a good job.
But we are open to discussion.
I will certainly reach out.
Yeah, good.
And you guys are starting to clean the, disinfect the bins as well, switch them out, so maybe we can not have the fly problem, which is, I'm not saying it's all on you guys, because I know there's multiple factors that contribute to that, but.
Should I infer from that, Councilman Sampson, that you're going to vote in favor of our contract amendment this week?
I vote against the flies, I'll tell you that.
With the contract amendment, yes, we'll be doing increased, we'll be doing bin exchange.
Yeah, we had a terrible problem with the flies last year, so.
And it should help to reduce the flies.
You got a full plate. And I think letting the trash sit is not an option, so I appreciate your diligence towards getting that trash picked up and processing it.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Steve.
Anyone else in the community have any announcements?
David Hart, City of Avalon's Recreation Department. First of all, I want to say congratulations to Councilman Hernandez. Your high school basketball team is in the playoff, I mean, baseball team, excuse me, is in the playoffs, and they'll be playing this Friday up in Thousand Oaks. Hopefully, he'll come back with the victory and we can have a game here for everybody to see. Also, the girls' softball team won their league and is playing this Thursday here at Joe Machado Field. Times will be posted later this week at the Recreation, we're going to put them up on the Recreation website. This last Saturday, the Kick It Up Dance program we have here on Catalina Island finished their second year with the Recreation Department and had a recital. About 30 kids, girls and boys ages 3 to 12 years of age, performed ballet, tap, lyrical, jazz and hip-hop routines. There was a special performance by Rachel and Jackie, two teenage dancers from the mainland, who showed what is capable with more practice and the love of the dance. We had over 100 people attend and support the event. We would like to thank the instructor page team for doing an amazing job teaching and controlling all the kids. We'd like to thank Sean Brannick for emceeing the recital, adding a lot of description and flow. Also, Audra McDonald, who's the supermom for the program, for reaching out to bring this program here and helping, keeping the program together. I also like to thank the school for allowing us to use the auditorium to create a wonderful stage for this performance. And Kick It Up Dance will be back in the fall to continue the dance education and the arts for this community. T-ball signups are starting this week. Kids ages four to nine years old, boys and girls are encouraged to sign up here at City Hall. The idea of T-ball is to teach the fundamentals of the game as well as the rules of the game. It is just $25, which includes your uniform and all coaching and equipment. Practice and game days will be Thursdays starting on June 23rd. I was asked to give a brief update on the progress of the turf field. We just went through the pre-qualification, the design build. We had four companies qualify. They will be going through a walkthrough with Dennis Jaik, our Public Works Director, and I next Thursday. They will then send us their RFP by June 16th, and we will have a company for you to approve by June 21st. We have pushed the start date forward to August 1st to end by, to have the build completely done by October 1st. This was done to ease logistics and save money on the housing for the turf crew. If the council has any more questions, please feel free to stop by my office and ask me. Thank you.
David, you might have said it, and I was writing, so I didn't hear it, but you, I wanted you to reassure the council that you've been in contact with the school and.
Oh, yes, I have been. We've been discussing because it feels going to impact them just as much as it's going to impact our own programs. And so it looks like, because we do have to go into September with this, I have contacted the school, let them know that the football program will be impacted, it'll be for the betterment of the program as a whole moving into the future. Thank you.
I wanted to update you, I think it was six weeks ago that I notified you, we received the Reclaim Water Master Plan Study. And at that point in time, I told you it'd be a couple of weeks before we'd have the final draft. Staff has been getting into it. We're real close to presenting you with the final draft. I've been in conversation with the finance director. We're planning on implementing this reclaim water program, the first part of fiscal year 16, 17. I apologize for the delay in getting the final draft to you, but hopefully, within a week to two max, we're going to have it posted on the website for the public to take a look at. We've had a lot of calls and a lot of questions. Now, what we're struggling with right now is firefighting capabilities. Once we replace the reservoirs with reclaimed water, the treatment plant only produces a certain amount, which we're getting into, but we have to work out a few reserve issues to make sure we can fight the big one, should it ever come. So the reclaim water study will be on the website within two weeks for your review. The fuel dock is proceeding nicely. As a matter of fact, when this meeting here started, the contractor walked his 55,000-pound excavator on top of the new pier, and he was able to pick it up and put it on his barge. It should alleviate a lot of the concerns about the design of the pier. It held a big, heavy amount of weight, as we were talking here tonight. Pebble Beach Road Project is ongoing. You might have seen it. We've had a few complaints about the aesthetic value of it. Staff is looking at that, perhaps painting it or installing some slats to hide it, but we're going to leave it like it is for a bit and investigate it and take your comments and implement them, whatever they might be. If you have any questions on those, I'd be happy to answer for you. You all good?
What are we doing on the back here?
Pardon me?
For the buses.
The back. Edison says I'll have a work order within a couple of days. That's all we're waiting for.
For the election.
Yeah, but then we have to hustle and get some chargers installed and level it out, make a driveway.
Yeah, great.
So we're trying to beat the deadline.
Got a lot going on.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Jordan Monroe, Management Aid. I just want to remind everybody that starting June 1st, so next month, we hope to be broadcasting on our new web service, which where you click on the cityofavalon.com, where you see the two links to go to City Council and Planning Commission. It'll now direct you to our new streaming service, which is Granicus. If you want to beta test it with us right now, if you're watching on live stream, you can switch over by going to cityofavalon.com backslash meetings. You'll be able to see the meetings itself, and then you'll actually be able to see it's on the screen right now for people at home. When you click the video, it pulls up the agenda for everybody to watch, and you can see what item we're on. So right now, it should say oral communication. So there you go, current item, oral communication. And then at the post-meeting afterwards, there's the agenda. You can click on any of the agenda items, and it'll take you right to that point in the meeting, as well as the staff reports and everything else. So we think it's pretty fancy, pretty cool, and a great way to help communicate with the community. So check that out. And again, if you've been using livestream, our hope is that we won't be, it won't be active next month. This will be our main streaming service. As a reminder, we don't have all of the archived videos on this. We will be updating them. If you don't see what you're looking for, you can request it from us. We can make you a DVD if you still have a DVD player. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Are there oral communication? Okay.
Just a couple of very brief announcements. Members of the community may have seen a kerfuffle around the pier today. We happily moved all of our old grungy belongings out of there in order to begin a quick, hopefully 10-day-only turnaround on renovations of the visitor's centers. So apologize to anybody for the inconvenience, but we're on our way to something much better. And also, a few people in the community have been concerned that our June board meeting falls on the same date if it were recurring on its usual frequency as graduation, so we have moved that to June 9th. So for anyone who's in the habit of showing up on the third Thursday, it will be on the 9th for the month of June instead. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, consent calendar.
This might be a record that we're just getting to the consent calendar.
Yeah.
There are seven items on the consent calendar, and once again, I am removing item number one for lack of time. Item two is expenditures. There are warrants, two payrolls and five electronic fund transfers for a total expenditure amount of $2,506,977.52. Item three is a contract extension with Catalina Transportation Services, ART Taxi Voucher Services. Recommended action is to authorize the interim city manager to extend Catalina Transportation's contract for the ART program, Blue Tickets, for one month at a reimbursement rate of $9.77 per ticket plus a monthly fixed cost of $3,036.75, and approve the reimbursement proposal for existing invalid dial-ride purple tickets. Item four is the contract amendment for ES Engineering Services LLC. Recommended action is to authorize us to enter into a contract amendment with ES Engineering Services to authorize an additional $156,900 to the annual base compensation for the maintenance and repair budget, ES staff's overtime and other services, and to clarify that the contract's initial term expires July 1st of 2019. And I want to just point out on that one item, even though we're asking you to increase the contract, the overall is that we're saving around $5,000. the contract, the overall is that we're saving around $5,000 a month. And that's on overtime, the 5% markup, and things like that. Anything still over $5,000 will come to council for your approval. Item five is the interim building inspector, and recommended action is to approve an agreement with Charles Abbott Associates to provide contract building inspection services while the recruitment for a permanent in-house building inspector is conducted. Number six is approval of the lease transfer for mole ticketing at kiosk out at the Cabrillo Mole, and this to approve the transfer and authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the lease upon payment of the transfer fee as provided in the lease. And that lease will have all the same terms and conditions as the existing one. Number seven is the fourth amendment to franchise and lease agreement with CR&amp;R Incorporated, Avalon Environmental, and recommended action is to enter into a fourth amendment to the franchise and lease agreement with CR&amp;R to authorize the additional bin cleaning and to provide a cash out to the city for the recyclable receptacles.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? I didn't ask what made you pleasurable, I just...
Yeah, I make, I make a motion to approve items one through seven, actually. Two through seven? Yes. Two through seven?
Second.
Moved to second, comments? Comments from the community? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
We just made up for a lot of time.
Fantastic.
That's, that's just...
Get in the bed, boys.
That was a record. General business.
General business, I just want, before we start on general business, noted that item 10, which was the Cabrillo Mole revitalization plan summary presentation, we were notified this morning by Kendall Flint that she had to respectfully decline for this evening because of personal reasons, and we are trying to reschedule that. And she's very sorry for it.
So, should we pull that?
Yeah, so it's coming back at another date.
Okay, that's fine. She's okay.
You know, kind of at this point, I would just like us all to get a copy of the report, and we read it, and if we have questions, invite her back. I mean, I don't, you know, I mean, this is getting ridiculous.
I, I will request that, it's...
I mean, what do you all think? I mean, this is my gut talking.
Well, I, we, we did request yesterday, or we, we talked about in a, in a city meeting yesterday requesting that report. I at least wanted to review it before we got to this point tonight, but unfortunately, Kendall's had some emergencies. Unless there needs to be a dynamic presentation, I think we could get a PowerPoint and a report, and we could, you know, turn it over to Recreation and Community Services to potentially do what we need to do with it from there.
I do have one thing for Kendall. Supposedly Adventure Tours hasn't been contacted by her to get the input from the tenants out there.
Well, neither was Ellie's Deli.
Oh, Ellie's Deli and Adventure Tours.
And those are two of the bigger ones.
Yeah.
I mean, two of the four, or five, whatever. So that's why I'm kind of like interested in just seeing the report.
So maybe we could just ask for the report.
And maybe we could then have somebody from the city could have the meeting with them and say, what do you have in mind, you know?
That's a good question, that's, that's a good point you bring up.
I will contact Ms. Linton.
Do you, are you, how are you feeling about that, that idea? I mean, I'd like your opinion.
Well, I'm not sure exactly what's involved with her summary report to us. I mean, I'll fill her out when I talk to her.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll see what she has to say.
All right. All right. Okay. Now we're good, now item number...
Oh, I'm sorry. Item eight, contract consideration for the taxi voucher program, and we have Audra here to explain it, as well as Catalina Transportation in the audience.
Good evening, council. This is the last time you'll see me tonight. Seen me a lot. So we, we talked about in the, in the presentations, the new transit program, which does not include the taxi voucher program, commonly referred to as the blue tickets, so that we don't get them confused. So the, the purple tickets will now be with Transportation Concepts, they'll be with the new vehicles that were on the PowerPoint. And then now we're left to a deal with the taxi voucher component of this. I have attached to your staff report is Catalina Transportation's proposal, and I did a cost analysis for you, a brief summary in the staff report, and in the back of it is, there's more of a breakdown. But the bottom line is that, well, the, the new program that CTS is, is proposing would limit the purchase of the taxi books to two per month, which currently it's unlimited. The ticket book cost would go from $20 a month to $30 a month. Two riders would be allowed per ticket in the same family, which right now you are only allowed one, it's one ticket per person. And the city will reimburse CTS on the books sold, currently it's on the tickets used. This kind of lines up with how we do it with Catalina Express and their, CTS's proposal, their, their monthly statement kind of mimics the Catalina Express statements that the city receives, so that would make it a little bit easier for, for everybody here at City Hall. Right now, the city reimburses the, each ride or each ticket at $9.77, and CTS is proposing that that go down to $8. The, the, I think that the crux of it is, is really kind of in, in this paragraph, that staff feels that all this, although the city is moving forward towards a more comprehensive public transit system, there is a real need to provide discounted taxi service to residents who live in areas that are not serviced by the bus route. The city's unique geography poses challenges to creating a bus system that meets the needs of all the transit users, and supplementing the bus system with a taxi voucher program is a viable alternative that's worked well in the past. The unfortunate part of it is that the city doesn't receive enough money in grant funds to pay for this program, and historically, the transportation program has been paid for all out of a mishmash of different grant funds that the city receives. So the, the deficit, the funding deficit with this proposal would cost $156,128.20 out of the general fund. With, that's not, that's using, taking out the soft costs, which is a portion of my salary and then a portion of the city mechanic's salary. And unless you have any other questions for me, I'll, I'll invite Connie up to the podium to answer any specific questions you might have. Do you have any questions for me? No?
I did receive a question today, so I want to, I want to just reiterate a couple of the bullet points, that the limit purchase to two taxi books per month, so it's, the concern was that there may be one ticket book, so somewhere out there in the community, just to clarify, the limit, limit the purchase to two taxi books, and that the, there would be the two riders per ticket. So not one book, two books, and...
Double the people.
Double the people. Yeah. Thanks.
Did you guys have any questions for me, in regards to this? Or any concerns about this? I mean, I have a speech all prepared, but Audra did a pretty good job, so...
Did I misread that it's two tickets per ride?
It'll be two tickets, it'll, no, it'll be one taxi voucher for up to two people listed on that account. And then if you look through my proposal, we'll be charging it additionally the way we charge our other taxi fares, so that that way the, the cost would not be incurred by the city. So, like, for example, on our taxi fares, our fares are based on two people. So that's the same thing with this taxi voucher. We're basing this fare off of two people, and then it would be a dollar per person after that. And that would be the people that are listed on that specific account, just like how you, we would be using the subsidy card that you guys provide, the same way that the Catalina Express does. And that's how our books would be. We've already contacted the same company that the Catalina Express goes through. It's going to look different, you know, so that it's not confusing to people, and it's going to have our little logo on the front. But it would be very similar to that, and it would say the name of the users on the book. That way, our drivers also have it easier for them as well, so...
So each, each resident can get ten round trips a month?
Ten round trips, or...
Or twenty-one ways.
Right, right. Which, considering it's, what it is, I mean, it's, they, they move to and from their homes much more often than you have to move to and from the city of Avalon over to the mainland. I don't think it's a whole lot to say, and especially because if you look through the data, and it has in there the number of books, the average number of books that are sold, and if you're taking into account how we're changing this, and so they'll be able to ride, like, you'll be able to ride with your wife, you'll be able to ride with your husband, that will reduce the number of books that are being sold as well, because they'll last longer.
Well, as we heard from members of the public previously, there's some that will go through a ticket book in one day.
Well, they'll...
So we, I, you know, some, some outreach and education on all of our parts would be good there, too.
Well, we've been, any, I mean, it's great that we just got the information for the new public transportation program. I'm currently, I've just been telling them to call Audra, poor Audra, but, because I didn't have any information to provide. So now that I have some information to provide to them, I can also help them out with those questions as well. Because we get asked those questions a lot from, from visitors, especially because they call, and we're the transportation company. So of course, they assume we know all the answers, you know? So it's hard when we say we don't know.
Taxi vouchers good for up to one year from the time of purchase. I personally have a problem with that with the express boats.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if, because I think these are going to turn around a lot quicker, maybe than some people use, could we just take that off, just because I really don't like that comment?
You just want them to be good forever?
No expiration.
They're already paid for, right?
Well, yeah, they're already paid for. However, you run the risk of then, if things change, or if costs increase, or if the fuel increases, and then we're then basically doing that taxi fare for the same price that maybe we sold five years ago. And I, I don't think that's really fair.
Well, if they didn't use it then...
A year, a year is a pretty substantial amount of time to have them last, I feel.
It's just, it's just my personal opinion.
And I agree. I think if they're paid for, there shouldn't be any expiration. No, I get your point, well taken.
Yeah.
In case there is changes, maybe there's some way we could work out a thing where we could do something with the ticket if, in fact, that does happen.
Well, we, we could talk about that, like...
How long is this contract we're looking for here? Just one year?
That's what I mean, so like, for, for a year, and then Audra and I can be talking and working through some things as we're going through the year, if there's things that we want to change. And we can definitely work on that. But I would quite honestly say right now, I would like to leave it at a year. I, I think, though, just to kind of expound on what Annie and Richard are saying, is that, so the city's paying you the $80 for the book, so the city's put out the money too. So I think that's, that's what, where they're coming from. They're not coming from the, I mean, they're coming from the rider as well, but I think they're coming from the fact that, like, for the Catalina Express, your book expires, well, the city's already paid that upfront.
And the people have paid their money upfront.
And you've paid your money upfront, and now it's no good.
You're correct.
So I think that's, I, I don't think it's about the actual, I think it's partly about the ticket. I think it's more about the city's money upfront on it. I could be wrong.
Exactly, no, that's exactly right.
And I liken that to same as you, purchasing a gift certificate, you know, law is now you, you can't...
Get a gift card.
There's no expiration.
A gift card, there is no expiration.
Well, and I, and I understand where you're coming from, I do. The majority of the tickets do get used before a year is up. I mean, I've actually had people come to me and try to use a taxi voucher that's been provided from, gosh, when The Loops owned the company. And, I mean, and they paid, I don't even know what, and The Loops were paid for that. And so you're basically saying, so somebody else has to honor that. But, but I understand what you're saying, I do. I would however, like to ask, just because everything we've put together, and the time and the energy we've taken to put all of our data together, and all of our costs together, and formed all of our reports getting ready for this, hopefully, it would take, you know, additional time, and I'd have to sit down and talk about things, and, and we're kind of running out of time right now, because I still need time to order the books, I need time to train my drivers, I need time to implement the new program, and it's, that would just create a whole nother delay. And that would be really difficult, especially coming into the summer.
Did you put, was there ever a discussion about making this more than a one-year contract?
No.
Can I also just take the obvious? I have a concern about $156,000.
Yeah.
Yeah. Where, where are we getting that? Any more DM money available? She said general fund, I think, earlier, right? Or is that wrong?
General fund.
I wasn't listening, maybe?
I said general fund, yes, I did. And I think that right now, that's where it would have to come out of, because there is no other funding source, but because there are talks on the table with Metro about these changes, you know, it would be a really good opportunity for the city to say, you know, now our transit program is costing us $150,000, $160,000, our general fund, and, and really, you know, help maybe, you know, make a case for additional funding. That's not guaranteed, you would have to say general fund, right now. And then my goal would be to go out and try and find money to fund it.
This is fiscal sixteen seventeen.
Correct.
What do we have in the general fund, and is it sustainable for a year's contract if it doesn't get replenished?
We just be... Hey, we want to talk to Bob.
Yeah.
We're going to be looking at that this upcoming month, maybe a budget. Just have to make sure.
Yeah, well, we'd, we would, we would put those numbers into next year's budget, and some things might have to be shifted around in order to cover the 156, but if, it would come from our general fund.
So it's 156 annually?
156 annually.
Oh, I see. Well, that's...
Well, we could, we could say we're going to take out the general fund now and have Audra run her butt off and go over to MTA and find out, ah!
Well, I have another question, too. Could you have, you have a cab service going on too, where people are paying regular fares? So I guess, and maybe you all have gone through the numbers, Bob and Audra, but, I mean, it's kind of like, how many full-time equivalents are driving to do this program? I mean, you have maybe ten cab drivers on the road?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and so how do you figure out what the full-time equivalent is of the people that are doing this in terms of your total operation? Because if, I mean, is it basically, hopefully, if you follow me, Bob, you know, because you might have a cab on the road all day, but that cab is making a lot of other money just besides these programs. These aren't designated cabs.
Well, sure, which is one of the reasons that, because I actually addressed a lot of your concerns that you had regarding this whole thing. That's why we've decided to have it be two people rather than one, which is what the current system is. It's also why we have reduced the cost. If you look at our average taxi fare cost, that's, it's still an 18.7% discount that you're receiving on the, on the average taxi fare. And it's, it's not that we're trying to, I mean, I, I really truly believe this has been a very fair proposal to you, and we've, I've tried very hard to address your concerns as far as the costs go. So I'm not quite sure, are you just wanting to know what percentage of those fares are the art fares?
Yeah, I mean...
Because currently, right now, currently, our, our art and DAR usage combined is about 26%. It's about 50/50. So about 13% of our taxi fares are art fares currently. And it would probably, I'm guessing, stay around the same. I, I can't imagine the actual fare usage to increase.
Okay, I guess, and maybe this isn't the first question to ask, so someone can shut me up. Your total, your total transportation budget?
Right.
Okay, for everything you do, from taxis, taxis to whatever, you're saying, what percent, I mean, how, again, I'm thinking of full-time equivalents. If you had a, if you're on the road from, what, 7:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night as your typical...
So like, what percentage of their day are they taking for this particular program?
Yeah, because, I mean, I don't know...
I do that based on fares, because we actually separate the taxi fares, so I can see how many actual taxi fares one driver does in a day, and so I can base that percentage of how much of his, how much of his day was spent on this program, how much of his day was spent on another program. Is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, I mean, is that... Yeah, I mean, it's that, it's that same thing of, you know, you got a, you got a cab going down the road, and you pick up a part-time, I mean, a cheap fare, a subsidized fare, and you pick up another one, and and you're basically still kind of going, kind of going in the same direction.
Oh, so it's because the cab drivers are picking up more than one taxi fare at a time?
So, so you're getting that, plus you have, if you own 16 cabs, again, what is your, your full-time equivalent?
Well, I'll tell you, to run a transportation company is quite expensive, okay? It's quite expensive. It's, the insurance alone is extremely expensive.
I know, and I guess I'm wondering how you dedicate a certain percent of all of that expense to this versus your, your.
Oh, because we take out, we can see how many fares, and I know exactly the number of fares that a driver's doing for each particular program, and so I can take the percentage that way. That's exactly how I decipher it. I truly take, we had maybe 1,400 fares, you know, this month or this day or whatever, just some random number. And I can see exactly how many of those fares were the art fares, how many of those fares were the dileride fares, how many of those fares are actual tax cash, cash taxi fares, and that's how I decipher it. That's how I came to these figures. That's how I was able to even collect this data, is because when we put it into our system, it's put in as a specific taxi fare. I even know how many of those are hotels, so. Do you have any more questions?
My only other question is that if we, the 159,000 is a guesstimate, so if not as many people are using the service hypothetically, if not as many participants after we have the Garibaldi go into play, then we may not even need the 150,000 from the general fund.
Right.
It's a maximum.
That's the max. So it may not even reach that cap.
Possibility, right.
What? Right.
It could go either way.
We would never go above that, and we would be monitoring that. So, and if it ever even got to be, to be where it was getting close, I would come to you guys and tell you guys, listen, you know, we're starting to reach our cap. And Audra would be fully aware as well, because she gets the bills every month. So we're both, we would both know. And you, you would know.
Isn't that the same, that's similar to what we get with the express, where in years past, we haven't, we haven't been, had this issue for several years, but in years past, we would know, you know, September, October, we're at our maximum, and so.
You have to wait until July 1st to start.
Yeah, right, right.
Fiscal year.
And we'd, and we would be fully aware of that, and you would know in plenty of time as well. And we would inform the public of that as well, so.
So it's a cap, Ollie.
No, I, I understand. On your insurance table, it's like 1,500 bucks per vehicle, and then it's extra $1,000 for the art rights?
That's because you guys require us to purchase the umbrella policy, which is an additional $1 million, rather than what the municipal code states, which is a million, and you guys require an additional 1 million. So if you don't want the additional insurance, I mean, that's just, I included it because you've always required it.
The code says it's going to be standard 1 million unless the council decides otherwise. So in this contract, you decided because it's transportation, driving people around.
Yeah, we can change that. That's.
And we, we also consult with Parsak, and they give us their guidelines.
Do you want to say something?
I had another $150,000 from MTA. Audra, do you think there's any chance to go back to?
I think there's a chance that maybe in the, in the same pot of money that we get the commuter subsidy money out of, I don't think that there's another $150,000 in there, but I think that a conversation with their budget person, who I have a good relationship with, and kind of sharing the situation we're in, may be helpful. That money is overseen by the LTSS committee, so I think that we would have to probably go to that, that committee meeting. I think it's also perhaps a conversation to have with the supervisor. Right now, we receive 650,000 for the commuter subsidy program, and then an additional 250,000 for our transit program. So we received quite a bit of money. That being said, we have not received an increase, substantial increase, in probably about five years, so.
I'm not going to promise, Ollie, but I can promise you I'll try.
That's all I can ask.
Mayor, you're in deep contemplation. Can you share?
I just, and I'm laughing. I'm in deep contemplation, because it's just, it's, I mean, I know this had to come up when it did, but, and I imagine the majority of the people, if we said we're cutting out this subsidy program, I mean, cutting out this program would probably.
It would be riotous.
I know.
Yes.
But, you know, but I'm thinking, trying to think ahead, because we're supposed to be working on budgets, what's the trade-off? You know, if we don't get any more money anywhere else, where's 156? What have we not been able to fund that we were maybe looking forward to next year out of the general fund? That's just my concern, you know, and.
We'll have to hash that out with Bob. Bob. Yeah.
Well, I will say, I know I've been asked a lot by the residents if you guys are going to be cutting this program. And they were all very happy to watch that night of the election, when you all said you weren't. So I would imagine Cindy would be right. They would be very riotous if you did.
I'd be leading that charge.
Yeah.
But just as, I mean, we, we need to have the conversation. So what if, what if the cost of the ticket book was increased a stitch more? Would that, how much would that offset?
Well, you're already going up $10 more a book, which is substantial. So now, yeah, no, yeah, it's $1 a ride that you're going up. I would imagine they would probably feel it's unfair that you are raising the dileride people 50 cents, and you're raising them $2, because you've never done that in the past. You usually try to keep the dileride lower than this program, but not this huge amount of difference according to them. Because to some people, you know, a dollar or $2 is a lot of money. To, you know, other people, it's not that much. So I guess it's all on how you're going to look at it. But you've never done it that way before in the past.
So let's just say, because how, based on your numbers then, and Ollie, you probably know, a dollar more would, would generate how much money, based on your projection?
$16,000.
$16,000? Oh, that's all.
Not quite 156.
It's something. It brings that down to 140,000.
I truly believe you're not going to reach that cap, though. I, I don't believe you will. I mean, I could be wrong. I'm not going to make a promise, just like, I can't make a promise financially, but I would only imagine based on the decrease in being able to sell the ticket books, and the fact that they can use one taxi voucher for up to two people in the family, is going to decrease the amount that you use as well. So I know it seems like a whole lot of money when you're looking at it coming from here, because you've never had to do that before. And this is the first time you guys are actually having to fund this program. That's why I know that that's probably really tough. But just keep that in mind. It probably is not going to reach that peak. I would be very surprised if it did.
I know, wait a minute, guaranteed it doesn't reach that point?
No, but I'm not going to guarantee it.
No, we, we can guarantee, we can.
I'm not going to guarantee it.
But also, we have, again, the e-bus is going into service, and that is intended to also be a form of transportation. So that may reduce some, some of it.
And I think that the way the route is designed right now for the e-bus does kind of meet the need more than, right now, the trolley only operates on cruise ship days and weekends, and it, and it doesn't really get you from the boat, like, to the, to the school and things like that. And I, I mean, we, we're not going to know until we know, but I can tell you that the reason that we're having this funding disparity is because the bus is going to run like a bus, and it's going to run seven days a week, 10 hours a day. So it's, it's a lot. So I think that's another thing to look at, is that when we're, when we're increasing something else, something else maybe has to decrease a little bit. But, I mean, I think that, that, I know it's a lot of money, and I will promise I will do my best to try and find some funds for it, or fund it all. But I think that, that, you know, we really are in a unique situation with just the geography of our community. I mean, there's no way a bus is going to be able to serve Middle Terrace or Marilla, or, or any of those things. And another thought at a later date, after we see how well the e-bus does, is to think about maybe getting a smaller vehicle that could do a deviated route. I know, we've talked about this in the past, I've talked about it with the mayor, you know, but I think the first step is just to get an actual bus running that runs like a bus. And I think that this, I think this program's valuable right now, because there isn't any other way to meet that need, so.
Connie, and when you keep your stats, it sounds like you keep a lot of them. Can you tell, do you have a way, because I know you guys call in when they're going to pick somebody up, but is, but do you have statistical data that says we did 50,000 trips up Marilla and 20,000 up Whitley, or?
I have the data to put it together for you like that. Would probably take a long time, because it's on a day-to-day basis, and I'd have to go through and sort every single day separately.
No, no, I'm just.
But I have it.
I mean, and I'm not saying go, going back.
Right.
But maybe going forward, if that's not too big of a deal?
Yes.
So we could get some kind of analysis done on things for like just what you were just commenting about, Audra.
Yeah, I can do that.
And the terraces and whatever.
Yeah, and in there, do you, if you see too, the, where the, the residents that are living in the hills, it's 79% of them, so. I mean, I, I did put that together for you, so that you were actually aware, that most of the people that actually are signed up for this program don't actually live in the flats. So because they can walk, it's easier for them. So these, these are actually people that won't be able to take the bus.
Chris, if we capped it at 1,200 bucks a year, that knocked like 25 grand off of it.
At what? 1,200?
1,200 a month.
12.
You said 1,200 a year.
1,200 books.
Oh, 1,200 books a year?
Yeah.
What does that come out to? I'd have to do math.
The way you have it, the 15, 14 comes out to be 126,000, 1,200 books comes out to be 96,000.
Yeah.
Probably like, not, you save 30,000 off of it. Maybe then we could bite the bullet when we're running out of books, and see where we're financially then, too.
Well, then, do you need a rule that you can only buy, well, you can only buy two bucks a month? Okay.
Yeah, if you reduce that to one book a month, that's, that's, that's almost devaluing the whole program in its entirety for them. But, yeah, right now, like, for the last eight months, we've sold 1,014, and in 2014, 15, we sold 1434 books. And like I said, those will decrease too, because of the fact that, yeah, because you're going to have more than, you're, we're not going to be taking a ticket per ride, per person. It's, they'll be able to use. Yeah, if there's only one person, well, sure. But there will be a lot of times where there's more than one person.
In the past, we've run out of express subsidies. We've shut, shut off the express books in May, until we get to the next fiscal year. And, I don't know, I think, $10,000 a month subsidy.
Well, just keep in mind, these are the people that live in the hills. So if you're trying to just, I understand trying to save money, but if you're trying to get it to where it's going to stop, the subsidy will stop for them, you're going to have these period of months that they're not going to have this trans, they're not going to have any public transportation. Yeah, they can't, if they can afford it. There's a lot of people that can't afford it.
And also, I mean, when that happens 10 months down the road, you know, we'll, we'll know better where we are financially. And you guys can come back and say, we need some more, we're running out. And we've got the money, we can do it.
So you're suggesting that we limit the books to 1,200?
1,200 books a year.
By limiting the books, then where does that put the deficit?
Knocks about 30 off of it. I guess like 126.
Okay, so.
Just a simple cost that the books are $10 more, more might limit the amount of books that are sold as well, on an annual basis, so.
Yeah, but, but that's not who we're wanting to shut out either.
Well, we're not wanting to shut anybody out. We can't.
Yeah.
It's not possible, you know.
So hopefully.
No, that wouldn't, that's not going to work.
Yeah. What is the problem with making the books transferable? I don't know what I'm meaning by that, but, yes.
I don't know what you mean.
We have a black market in books.
Oh, yeah.
Scalpers.
We don't want to do that.
Okay.
Come, I've got a book.
You know, part of what works and what does keep the cost down is that you have to provide that subsidy card as proof that you live here nine months out of the year. So we're, we're placing the same restrictions that we have on the commuter book program as the taxi voucher program.
Are we going to have two subsidy cards now?
No, no, no. There, there, I had suggested that there was punch holes at the bottom, too, when it was one book a month, and then they just would have one card, and the top would be the express, and the bottom would be, and that's how you could track it. But she, I, I don't know how you're going to track two books a month, so.
Well, we've actually developed a program, a computer program, that will, when you come in to purchase your books, it'll tell us exactly how many books you purchased that month, and we'll be able to know. And it's also going to be a report that we're going to issue to Audra every month. So you'll be able to see, and it'll have the customer's name and their account number, and you'll be able to see how many books they've purchased in a month. So it's, it's all set up and ready to go.
So, but if I'm a husband and wife team, can we both be on the same ticket book?
If you're both on the same subsidy card, you can be on the same ticket book. So you can share your ticket book.
Okay.
Just like you can do with your, just like you can do with your vote subsidy.
Well, Ollie, you have an idea. Do you want to make?
I would like.
Wait, wait, wait. What would the community like to say? Any comments? Judy, Jim, Steve, Mike? No comments? Okay, no comment. Okay.
I would like to move that we provide direction about Catalina Transportation Service proposal for 12, not to exceed 1,200 bucks a year, 1,200 books a year, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Let's second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further comment?
Okay. Oh, do we need to amend it with, okay, you already got that, 1,200 books. Good. I like it for now. It's best we can do.
All eyes.
I guess I was waiting for you guys to push the button. Okay, we're moving right along on item nine.
Okay, item nine. Is the encroachment permit for the Catalina Island Museum tiebacks for the museum amphitheater shoring? And Dennis Jage is here to speak about it, and Mike Flynn is in the audience also, if you have questions.
Evening again.
You didn't pay me enough, Dennis, to put this on the earlier part of the agenda.
Thank you. Too late. The, as we all know, the museum project is fast approaching completion. One of the last things they have to do is build the amphitheater in the back, and they have to stabilize the slope adjacent to the amphitheater. And in so doing, they are proposing to install tiebacks that hold the shoring. You all might be aware of what we did on Lower Terrace Road, the I-beams and the. You all might be aware of what we did on Lower Terrace Road, the I-beams and the concrete beams in between them, while Lower Terrace Road has similar tiebacks as this. These tiebacks are going to be going into, under our Caia del Sol Road, on approximately 30-degree angle in about 15 feet, and I believe there's eight of them on each I-beam. You all have copies of the plans. There's some stout conditions the contractor has to perform in order to do this work, he's got a liability issue up there, needs to locate utilities and make sure that he doesn't damage anything up there. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
It looks like there's a section of this shoring that's going up in the property next to the museum's property, does it encroach onto the neighbor's property? No?
When I was out there today, I verified that it does not. It's real close, it's right to the edge of the Rifkin property. That, if you're looking at that aerial plan, Councilman, it's the line going down is a property line, property west. So I verified that earlier.
Is this going to, how's the construction, how long's the construction going to take on this? Do we have any idea, and is it going to be any kind of a problem for the neighbors that have to utilize that street up there?
They're going to leave access for the people, they have to. During 8 o'clock till 4 o'clock, it could be fairly noisy, there's going to be a drill rig up there, but I'm told that the process is going to be fast-tracked, and I'm not quite sure, but it should go fairly quick up there, one to two weeks.
Okay, and it's going under the city, a city property, correct?
The tiebacks are.
The tiebacks are.
The angled tiebacks, the vertical shoring will be on their property.
So there doesn't need to be any kind of an encroachment onto the city street, does it? Or is it just the wall? I know they're going to, Michael told me they're going to put up a wrought iron fence along top of the wall once.
I didn't see any plans for wrought iron fence up there.
You didn't?
No.
That's what I was told, is that true? Okay.
He's shaking his head, yes. I haven't seen the plans for...
Haven't been to planning commission yet.
Are they on this? No. They're separate plans, so I haven't seen the wrought iron design or...
Okay, it's probably more costly.
Anyway, the tiebacks, Joe, are, do go under, into our property, they're...
Underground.
And we know where all the, the infrastructure lines are going to be, and the pipes and electrical, and that's not going to affect that, and then there's guarantees in here, like these conditions of approval guarantee that if there's any damage done into the future, then it's going to be fixed.
You bet.
The city will fix it, and then we'll be reimbursed by the developer, correct?
Yeah, it's correct. It's my understanding of the agreement.
Yeah, we got a, and what's the timeline on it? A couple of weeks, maybe?
No, the drilling, the drilling process itself should be one to two weeks, I would say.
Okay. And just to be clear, we're not going to do the work, they have to do the work, they have to restore it to the same condition. If they don't, then we go after them with, if we have to pay for it, they have to reimburse us, but they're required to do all the work themselves, pay everything, restore it, and if they don't, then we go after them.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike Flynn, Hamilton Pacific. The tiebacks are a three-quarter inch rod, they go, they're 15 feet in length, they go at a 30-degree angle, they only protrude actually into the setback about 11 feet at the angle that they're at, and they start two feet back over, and they're on, there's not eight per steel piling, there's eight total, there's just one per piling that goes in. So they're separated every eight feet, they start down at about nine feet, and then they go back into the slope. Your infrastructure is about five feet deep, at the deepest infrastructure up on top, so we're substantially low, and where the end of the tieback would be, would be down probably about 12, 13 feet.
Help me understand how the engineering works, these tiebacks go, they go in, and then what, does some butterfly out, so it holds?
They do, there's a bell on the end of them, so when they go in, and they have to have a certain, they have a pull test on them at the end, so they have a certain Kip factor that has to hold, to be able to hold it back. But it's a stabilizer for the wall. What the tieback is doing, you have a 25-foot steel beam that goes into the ground, so we drill straight vertically down 22 feet from Caia del Sol, and then what happens is that beam is set, and it's a two-foot hole that it goes into, and it's filled with concrete, so that's what stabilizes the beam, just like we did the shoring from before. But then what happens is that when that is done, and that concrete is stabilized, now we start to pull the dirt back away, so we end up with a vertical slope, and we have concrete slats that go into that, into that steel, and then it gets backfilled behind it, so. And to address your question, Joe, the timeline for drilling should not be more than three days.
Okay.
Unless we hit rock, or we hit something that is harder to get through, we have to do core drilling. Everything beyond that should be able, for the most part, to be done within the museum side of the wall, so we'll be on the inside, we won't be up on Caia del Sol.
All right.
So it should be a fairly brief time for...
Just try to make it, make it available, so the residents can get in there, so we don't get phone calls, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's looking good, as far as I can see.
It's going to be posted next month, but we'll get it there.
As far as I can see, Dennis put in a lot of exceptions here that will assure us that it's going to be done correctly, and if something messes up in the future, then we're going to be reimbursed for it, and you guys seem to be doing everything in a way that's good for the community, so, yeah, I think this is a good thing. We've got to get this done, I mean, you guys are on a timeline, so.
Yeah, just for information, we'll also be working on the front of the museum, so that whole curb is going to be torn out and redone, and a whole new sidewalk going on, and parking across the street.
Yeah, the parking needs to be done, yeah.
When do we get our sidewalk back?
When you get what?
Our sidewalk?
Your side back?
Our sidewalk back.
June 18th or 19th, whatever the opening is. I'll be there the night before till at midnight, so.
Cool. Okay.
Yeah, the diagonal parking, that's what it was, okay. Make a motion to approve item number nine, improve encroachment permit with recommended conditions.
And I just want to amend that just a little bit, Joe, if you could add and adopt the resolution.
And adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, no further comments? Call for the, I know, any further comment? Call for the vote.
All eyes.
We're going to be going into closed session.
Okay, we're going to go back into closed session on item number one, the island charters versus Avalon, and we'll have other closed sessions, at least for the Casino Dock Cafe. Anticipated litigation and employee dismissal release are considered jointly, this is regarding a letter from Ms. Cook, the former, the current planning director, and we're also going to talk briefly about existing litigation, the Falls Canyon Road matter.
Okay, and good night, Tony. You didn't have to tell me that. We're back from closed session. Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, in the closed session, the council unanimously amended the statement of decision on the Cook appeal. It's the one paragraph that Ms. Cook had asked to be revised to reflect the action, and so now it reads as follows, "Instead, comma, the city council finds that Ms. Cook shall be reinstated with pay to her position as planning director effective November 17, 2015, subject to a two-week suspension without pay, which shall be deducted from the back pay slash benefits that she shall receive in light of the council's decision to reinstate Ms. Cook's employment. In addition, upon reinstatement, Ms. Cook shall be provided a new PIP so that she is aware of the expectations of her position, and so she can bring up her level of performance. Ms. Cook shall report back to duty beginning April 27, 2016. There were no other reportable actions."
Thank you, there's no other comments?
Nope.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night, Tony.